Good evening. Today is Wednesday, June 6, 2018. The regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission is open. We all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item is roll call.
Eileen McKean.
Nick Curran. David Parent.
Deborah Phillips.
Robert Simon.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Next item is consideration of the minutes. We didn't do the April 4 meeting. Do we have people here can approve that one today?
I'm sorry, I didn't do that.
Okay, that's not ready to go, okay.
I mean, I don't know if everyone's here who can vote on it. I don't know that answer.
Who's that?
You have to have a, I mean, you just need a majority of you folks to approve it.
You're for the April?
She wasn't. I was. One, two, three.
No, you don't have a majority.
I think we'll go on that one. Now, the next, there's a regular meeting on May 2, 2018. I think we have a majority here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on May 2, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes from the regular meeting on May 2, 2018 be accepted as submitted.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Call for a vote, Ellie.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
And abstain.
Old business, doesn't seem to be any there. New business, application A 13-7.4/58 and 88 Woodhouse Avenue, Donald A. Ahern, 36 unit complex, another construction, Woodhouse Avenue, there's a request for an extension.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I realize this is a simple extension, but my discussions with Erin that looked like there might be some issues, so I thought it would be best just to be here tonight in case there was any clarifications that I could help with.
Erin, what do you?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just set the stage a little bit here. The law department has always said for extensions, the commission can act to extend something as long as there's no violations or new conditions on the property. So, there's no new conditions, but we have two violations on this property that we knew about five years ago when it was approved. So, because there was an application in front of us, what typically we do is we fold it into the approval. So, in this case, cleaning up those two violations was folded into the approval five years ago. One of them, in one case, in one condition of approval, said that violation had to be addressed within a year of commencement. Well, they didn't commence, and now we're five years later. So, I have no problem with the extension, except I want to see these two violations addressed, because if you simply extended another five years, which is what we would do ordinarily, no one knows when those two violations would ever be addressed. So, I was speaking to the law department, and what I was advised is to say, yes, the commission can act to extend it, but there is a timeline given to the permuttee as to when those two violations have to be addressed sufficiently. And in one case, it involves taking out phragmities in an area, oh gosh, you know, about, I don't know, 40 by 40, a small area where the phragmities has been growing, removing the phragmities and planting wetland plants. Now, of course, you can't do that in the middle of the summer. So, that will have to wait, maybe we could say it would have to be done by October 1. You can plant plants in the fall, shrubs, we're talking about shrubs, so that kind of thing. So, that is my advice on this.
What about, what's the second violation?
The second one involved a series of fill deposits, about nine piles of fill, which are not eroding, they've been covered in weeds for five years now. They are right near the wetlands. They're not impacting a wetland, but you're not allowed to deposit fill within 20, 30 feet of a wetland without a permit to do so. So, they're just sitting there. Now, there's a third issue that doesn't, it's not Mr. Ahern, the folk, the entity that owns this property, it's not really his problem. What it is, is the landscaper from Putter Homes, the tower condominiums, used to drive through the Ahern property to dump, and he created a dump pile in the middle of the swamp on tower property. But he can't get there from the tower land, so he goes through the Ahern property to access little, this little isolated hidden junk pile in the middle of the swamp. So, there was a hold-to-do five years ago about this, you're trying to get the towers' folks to go through the Ahern property, clean it up, and for Mr. Ahern to block it off, which I believe he did, we can ask Attorney Malloy, but I believe he did block off that access. As far as the cleaning up, I had a tremendous amount of difficulty getting him to do that, getting the towers, homeowners association, or whatever, to address that issue.
But from what you're telling me is that Mr. Ahern, Mr. Ahern took action, he just blocked it off, so they're no longer going in and out. Putter property is no longer going in and out.
Apparently. And I think that that shouldn't be dropped. I should revisit that, and I believe Mr. Ahern will give permission to revisit that. In other words, to let whoever's going to clean it up come through his property to clean it up.
Okay, but that's not really...
No, it's not, it's not...
Okay, you're just bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's another violation that does concern this property. The only access is through this property, so it's kind of relate...
Okay. Then, I'm trying to find something that we can put into a motion here. Now, and, okay, Ms. Malloy, do you have some language for us?
Well, I don't have any language. I just wanted to discuss an issue. I agree that the anticipation was that this project would go forward in this initial five-year period, and it has not. So, Erin is correct, the plantings were not been done. The concern from our perspective is, if the project goes forward, everything that we're being required to do now will get torn up again. I think the area is stable. She's acknowledged the piles are stable. It is a relatively small, isolated wetland area. I don't think the condition has changed in all these years, so I just want to raise the issue of, are we going to do something for the sake of doing it and then tear it all out again, and have to put it back in after the project is built?
Joan, do you have an estimate if he's going to even do this project?
I know he wants to do the project. Obviously, there have been some circumstances beyond the control of my client. I know he's actively pursuing it, but so far, it just hasn't, you know, all the pieces haven't come together.
I went by there last week and pulled over and looked down in there, and you're right, the piles have stabilized. With the grass growing now, you can hardly tell with the weeds and things, it's stabilized. And the phragmities, I don't know, Ms. O'Hair, how much have they expanded since the time?
Not much, no.
So, they're not, and they're not a species that's taking control of the area out there, then? So, if we were to give her an extension, another five-year extension, chances are nothing would really change out there. And we wouldn't lose our, what we've already requested that they do, plant land plantings and clean up those piles, it's going to be done, sooner or later it's going to be done. So, I mean, it sounds to me like we've got a dormant piece of property that nobody's bothering. You've opened up an issue now about the travel way through there to dump the grass clippings. It's not, have you been out there recently to see if it's been cleaned up or part of it's been removed?
The what has been removed?
The grass clippings from the towers.
Oh, this wasn't, this was junk. This was washing machines and things.
And then the...
And signage and so on.
So, that, all that stuff's been removed?
No, it has not, no.
It's still there? Is it still an active site for dumping?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Ahern blocked the access. Part of his property was an old paper street, so that I think some individuals thought that they could use it for access. It's actually deeded to him, and so when Erin brought this to our attention, he blocked off the access, so it would not continue.
Yeah, we had a site walk out there and walked that whole area.
Yeah.
I'm not really familiar, because I wasn't here five years ago, with what the scope of the project was, but when the project goes through, that area with the phragmities is going to be torn up again anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I'm thinking it better to just leave it dormant the way it is until he goes to start the project, and then we'll be, we can clean up.
I agree with you, the condition stays, and because it's such a small wetland area, it's not like it's spreading. You know, it's that small pocket, you know, as Erin said, maybe 40 by 40, you know. It's isolated, it's not doing thing to any other wetland, so I, again, I'm making the pitch for, don't make us tear it up, plant something that we're going to tear out again.
The other thing I think the rest of the commission needs to know is that there wasn't very much virgin soil out there. That whole area had been disturbed over the last 40 or 50 years with different piles of debris, or whatever you want to call it.
He operated a construction business from the site, so you had lots of equipment that was stored there, material that was stored there, it was an active site, it's still active, but not as much as it used to be for construction purposes.
So, at this point, it seems that, at this point seems just to, that's called just to rule on the request for an extension just the way it is. So, there's a sense, okay. That being the case, may I have a motion on A 13-7.4 58 and 88 Woodhouse Avenue, that the request for extension be granted?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the request for extension on application A 13-7.4 58 and 88 Woodhouse Avenue, Donald A. Ahern, 36 unit apartment complex with other build construction be granted.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I have a second motion.
Call for a vote, Ellie.
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes, only because I believe it's better to have it stable where it is now than to go in there and disturb it and start over again, so I agree.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Next item, application, oh no, determination, D 18-6.115 Webb's Swept Hill Road, Paradise Hills Vineyard and Winery, request for determination of exemption for agriculture under Section 4.1A for several site improvements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Use the mic, please, sir.
Yeah.
State your name for the record.
Yes. Good evening, my name is Daniel Mara. I am, my name is Daniel Mara. I am the attorney for Paradise Hills Vineyard and Winery. With me is Mr. Richard Ruggiero.
Erin, do you have any comments?
Yes, this came in Monday, although I knew it was coming. I've been in discussion with Attorney Mara the last few weeks, because this is in front of planning and zoning, and when it came to my, around for the departmental review, it was clear that it needed, I thought it was clear, it needed a wetland permit, or wetland permitting of some variety. So, tonight, we're here to discuss what variety that may be, and Attorney Mara has, his position is it only needs one kind of wetland action, and that is an approval, a request for determination of exemption for agricultural. So, he's asking that the commission declare it exempt for agricultural, but what the "it" is, is several site improvements that they want to make to their farm, their vineyard and winery, which Mr. Ruggiero lives on. He lives on the property, and it's a vineyard, and they also have a little wine shop. Well, I'll let them discuss. I've never been inside, I'll let them talk about what kind of facilities they have, and what kind of improvements they're planning on making. So, what you have been handed tonight, I didn't send materials out in the packet on this, because it's my practice, I don't send out materials till we get an application in. Sometimes, applications don't materialize. So, you didn't get it in your packet over the weekend, you got it tonight, and what it is, is correspondence, my memorandum, lengthy memorandum, to Janice Small, law department, looking for some guidance on this, because I felt the situation required two different kinds of permitting from the wetland commission. And of course, their attorney's position was, no, it doesn't require those two, it requires a different one, it requires a declaration of exemption under agricultural. So, this, we'll have to kick this around, and what the commission has to consider is, does this property become subject to our surfaced area provision? Because it looks like they're over the surfaced area requirement that triggers a wetland permit, which is 20,000 square feet of semi-imperious or impermeable surfaced areas. They haven't, I've asked them to provide a figure for that, they have not provided that figure, but they, but Attorney Mara conceded, they're probably over the 20,000. That's not the issue. He believes that the thing is exempt. The other, the other permit, the other variety of permitting which I believe is required is for the stormwater situation. They have an existing parking area where their customers park, and they want to expand that, maybe it's, maybe it's 33% bigger, something like that, not clear, no square footage was provided, but, and they want to expand it, but also, there's trouble with the existing parking area, there's a drainage issue, and the drainage is kind of uncontrolled, and it, over the winter, it, well, we had a rough winter, and over the winter, it went into the woods and scoured out a root into the woods, into the wetland back there. So, that needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed today, and it needs to be addressed if they do get the approval from planning and zoning to expand the parking area. And how the commission wants to handle it, we're here tonight to kick it around, as to how you want to handle it.
Well, my, my own view at the outset, okay, is that I've got a pretty thick application over here, and I've got one of your letters over here, three-pager, I've got a memorandum from Janice Small, and quite frankly, I don't think that I know, either I or the commission knows enough and can absorb enough in a few minutes to be able to give, make a fair determination, a determination that's fair to the applicant, and a determination that's fair to the commission. So, my thought is I would really like to see this tabled until next month, and this gives you, it would give both parties a chance, so let's go through this, find out what it's all about, let us, let the commission, let the commission read this stuff. We've got a question, follow-up numbers, and I see, you know, we were in a situation where Janice Small isn't here, but very quickly, she's talking about accessory uses, and that would seem to me, it says, wait a minute, this is not completely a farming property, it's a property that has a farming use and also has some other commercial use.
Right. I understand why you might want to table it, but since they're here, I mean, I think we should hear them out, and then maybe you would want to digest it and table it, but we can hear them out. I've been in discussions back and forth, I don't think I need to discuss it anymore with the property owner or his attorney, but I think they should make their case, at least, and then if you want to table it, you can.
Is there an environmental report on this?
No, there's just this letter. I mean, she goes, I mean, this is, this is a report.
That's Janet Small's comments.
We've got Janet Small's comments.
Yeah, this came in Monday, so my, as I mentioned to the chairman before the meeting started, essentially, my environmental planner's report is that memorandum, it's, I would say the same thing, I would say the same thing essentially in there. I would present the different issues on the property, which I did in that memorandum.
You've been out to the site?
Yes, about a month ago, I went out to the site.
And looked at what they wanted to do?
Yeah.
So, you've had five weeks to make up a report for us to read on your side of the story, so you're going to take and submit Janet's letter as your environmental report?
Well, my report to Janice, so I wrote an environmental report to Janice Small, laying out all the issues, and I could go through it if you'd like.
No, I don't want to hear about, well, Janet's, you're our staff person, I wanted to hear from you what you thought in regards to this application, your wordage.
It's right here. This is, and this is the problem, it's single-spaced, three spaces, and you know, and this is what my concern with it. Now...
I mean, do we want to hear their presentation tonight, and then go out there and do a site walk, and then have them come back and do another presentation with our joys and concern to what this project's going to take place on?
Yes. Let me back up and say, typically, we don't approve applications the first night, we never do. We're not legally, we can't approve an application the first night, but they didn't submit a, or application, they submitted a request for determination.
Right.
And typically, we do act on requests for, the first night, whether it's a request to extend something, or a request to declare it not a wetland permitting required, like we had with the Tully's Road last, two months ago. So, this is a request for agricultural exemption. But yes, you might want to go out and, you could set a special, I mean, a site walk and go out and see it between now and the July 18 meeting, you could do that.
All right, so you're comfortable that if he gets his presentation tonight, we can act on it? Is that what you're telling me?
If you feel comfortable, you can, you can act on his request. Yes, you are allowed legally, by statute, to act on his request tonight. If you don't feel comfortable moving forward, you can table it and act on it next time. And you can also say, we've thought about this, and we're suggesting you submit a wetland application. This isn't good enough. You've got to also submit a wetland application, that's another option you have. They didn't want to submit a wetland application.
Which party you're giving it?
I'm having them present tonight and decide on whether or not to table it after we hear it.
Okay. Okay, I think you heard the conversation. Yeah, if you want to be, okay, if you'd like to make your presentation, feel free, we'd be happy to hear it. But it may be, it may well be, that after we hear the application, we're still going to have to table a thing, because as I say, you've got this, you've got this, and you've got that, there's a lot of information that we're being asked to absorb in a very short period of time.
Certainly understand that, Mr. Chairman. Let me see if I can walk you through what I think you have before you.
Okay.
And give you what our thoughts are on the issue. This started, well, the first official communication was my letter of May 9, 2018, to Ms. O'Hair. It should be in front of you. That occasioned her to send her memo to Janice Small, and Janice Small responded with her memo.
If I can stop you, is it, is that letter in your packet?
It is not in the, in the application, but I understood that you were going to receive it from Ms. O'Hair. If not, the materials in my packet cover the same ground that was in that letter.
All right, so go ahead.
So, hopefully, I made the stuff in my packet, I hope it's better than the letter, but it's the same general grounds. Paradise Hills is a farm, and it's a farm winery. Paradise Hills grows grapes and sells wine and wine products directly at the farm, over the counter in the farm winery, either by the glass or by the bottle. That's how they do their business. Everything that goes on at Paradise Hills is incident to and secondary to the growth of grapes and the production of wine, and the sale of wine. That's what it's there for. Now, we have gone through the zoning process to get a classification of zoning use called farm winery. That farm winery use is what is referred to, is what Attorney Small refers to in her short rebuttal, a response to Ms. O'Hair's letter. I quote the farm winery use at length in my materials to you, but I also submit to you that they're generally not informative, zoning classifications are generally not informative to a wetlands commission, and I maintain that same stance as we sit here.
Wait, I'm sorry, could you just make that statement again?
The zoning definitions and classifications, I find, are generally not informative to the wetlands, because they're different regulations, different standards, different words, different regulations. But nonetheless, Attorney Small referred to the zoning uses in response to the wetlands issue. What I would like to do is I'd like to march you through, or walk you through, what the wetlands issues say about farming and define as farming. And the wetlands regulations define farming in a way that is way beyond, you know, a guy with a plow in a field and a red bar. If you look at the materials I sent you, the wetlands regulations incorporate the state's definition of farming, which is found in 1-1Q with the general sections, and I quote that at length in the materials that I sent you. But among the things that are defined as farming is cultivation of the soil, harvesting, raising or harvesting any agricultural or horticultural... of the soil, harvesting, raising or harvesting any agricultural or horticultural commodity, the operation management, conservment, improvement and maintenance of a farm and its equipment, the production or harvesting of any agricultural commodity, and the handling, planting, drying, packaging, processing, freezing, grading, storing, delivering to storage or to market, or for direct sale of any agricultural or horticultural commodity. So what it says is they can grow it, they can process it, and they can sell it, all under the definition of farming. And that's what the Paradise Hills Winery does. They grow grapes, they make wine, and they sell wine. Everything that is done on the premises is in furtherance of that activity. Now, if you look at the site plan that we've, uh, submitted to zoning for site plan approval, and that's the, the big map that is in front of you, it, it shows some of the changes that we want to make to existing conditions out on the, the property. The big things we want to do in this site plan is to install a patio, which I apologize, I did not mention in my memo, but we do want to install a patio. We want to, we have approval to erect and maintain a seasonal tent, and then we want to rearrange and increase parking, and finally, we want to build an addition onto the existing farm building to allow for more processing space, more storage space, and a workshop for storage and maintenance of farm equipment. That's what we want to change, that's what we want to do. And I think the question before this commission is whether any of those activities or the other activities on site fall within the state definition of farming, and I suggest to you that they do. The tent and the patio and the parking are all incidental and supportive and ancillary to the state intent of the, the winery is to sell wine. You can't have direct sales unless you have the methods and the modalities necessary for direct sales. The statutory and the town, the statutory definition and the town definition of farming includes direct sales of, of horticultural commodities. There's no question that wine is an agricultural or horticultural commodity. I think the, the key here is whether or not sales of that falls within, in farming, and the statute expressly says that it's, that direct sales of those commodities to customers is farming. Parking is farming. Having the areas for, for sales is farming. It may not sound like it in the traditional understanding of farming, but under the state statutes and the town definition, it is. The building addition is all directed at either the maintenance of the farm equipment or the increase of production of wine. Again, that's farming under the state definition. Um, the, uh, equipment workshop, the production and storage space, all of that counts as either the maintenance of the farm or as the processing, handling, and production of horticultural commodities. What we want to do with parking, you'll note on the plan that there's, it looks like there's a lot of parking. Uh, this plan shows 100 parking spaces. That is, by the time we get through zoning, it's most likely going to be reduced to 87 parking spaces. Um, there's already existing parking that's out there that is incorporated within that 87, and some of the existing parking will be eliminated and moved as is indicated in this plan. It may not sound like parking is farming, but parking is incident to direct sales, and direct sales is farming. You cannot have a, a, a opportunity to do direct sales without having the, the method and the setup to allow those direct sales. So we have an entity out there that exists for the sole purpose of growing grapes and producing wine and selling that wine. And everything that we're talking about, all the uses, all the buildings, all the structures that we're talking about out there is in furtherance and incident to that primary use, and therefore, they all come under the definition of farming.
Okay, now, okay, I'm listening to your presentation. Now, um, could you elaborate on J, events and promotion, and, and what is, again, these subsections, what are, what is this that you're quoting?
That is, the, these, the, what you have in your hand is the section of the zoning regulations that we talked about.
Okay.
About how the zoning regulations allow certain ancillary uses. One of the things that we're allowed to do is have events and promotional events. All that means is that we can have groups of customers come in to buy wine. That's what that means. We are also allowed to play music in the, uh, the tasting room where the sales occur. You can have live music or recorded music. That is also in furtherance of sales. There's nothing that is done on the winery, whether they allow groups to come in or allow people to come in and listen to somebody play guitar, that is not aimed at sales of wine.
Okay, Ben, now stay with, stay with me on this, because what you're reading to me are zoning regulations.
Right.
With the inlands and wetlands, and, um, it may very well, it may well be that, um, as far as zoning goes, you're, you know, you're, that you're in compliance, or that you have something that if you did put it before, planning and zoning would be approved if we're, you know, when they're looking at it in terms of their regulations. But we've got a problem is, we've got a wetland here. And so, as a wetland commission, we have to determine, uh, whether or not there's going to be an adverse impact on a wetland. This is why, okay, so I mean, you, you're, you're, you made a, I, I think you made a great P and Z presentation, but I'm not so sure that you've made a convincing inland wetlands. And I'm just, I'm just talking, I have not asked the other commissioners for their comments, and, uh, so at this point...
If, if I can respond to your issue.
Sure.
And I don't mean to take over your, your meeting. Um, you're, I agree with you on one part, and I disagree with you on another.
Okay.
Uh, I agree with you that the zoning definitions that we talked about don't have anything to do with wetlands, and the only reason I raised them is because they were raised by Attorney Small, and to give you fair notice of what happens out at the winery. The second part about, we're here to determine whether there's going to be an adverse impact on the wetlands, I, I apologize, but I don't agree with that. What I think we're here to, to tonight is to find out whether the activities and the uses that are proposed on this site are subject to your regulation. And I submit that under Section 4.1A, which is the agricultural exemption of your regulations, that we are not. And the agriculture 4.1A of your regulations provides for farming as a matter of right. Uh, if you look at 4.1A, um, it talks about grazing, farming, gardening, harvesting of crops can be undertaken as a matter of right. And the reason I went into the definition of farming and the things that are included in farming in the state statute is in furtherance of that exemption, because what your regulations say is that farming is defined by the state statutes. The state statutes identify a whole list of, of activities that are defined as farming and accepted under the term farming, and then your regulations say that those activities are permitted as a matter of right.
Okay. But now, where I'm having a little difficulty, maybe you can clear this up, or not. Uh, when I'm looking at farming, deciding, farming defined, it gets you the handling, planting, drying, packaging, freezing, storing, delivering to storage or to market or to a carrier, or for direct sale.
Correct.
Uh, as an incident to ordinary farming. Um, but it doesn't, but this definition here, the state definition here, doesn't seem to address, um, you know, uh, uh, musical events or, um, it doesn't seem to address the uses that the planning and zoning, uh, definitions use. So that, you know, we seem that we're, we're doing pretty far for the first one, two, three, four bullet points, but it gets a little bit confused when we get to the fifth one. Because it seems to me, when you read this, it says, okay, fine, you have your farm store, you can come in here, buy your wine, and go home. Um, and that's where I'm having a little bit of, of difficulty.
Well, the meth, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead. I know, I, I should...
The, the method of direct sales, and that's really where I think the gravement of your, your difficulty is, and I certainly don't mean to put words in your mouth.
No.
But the method of direct sales at any winery in the state of Connecticut is direct sales by either the bottle across the table at the, the farm store or the winery tasting room, or by the, by the glass. That's how it's sold. No winery in Connecticut makes enough wine to be able to get themselves into wine stores or liquor stores. Connecticut wineries live and die by sales across the counter in the, the wine tasting room.
Right.
And that's exactly what Paradise does. So what I am suggesting...
Well, okay, okay, go ahead.
What I am suggesting is that the direct sales, which is expressly included as farming, has to have the methods to allow those direct sales contemplated as sales.
And I think, well, actually, you and I agree on, you know, we agree on that, that's just a direct sales. I mean, this means, yes, you can have a farm store, yes, you can have, uh, a gathering place, I'm, uh, but where we start to, or where I start to get a little bit edgy, if you will, uh, or concerned, is where we have, uh, public, you have these, uh, public events that were fine under P and Z, but I don't see where they come in under wetlands.
My, my question, I think, back in my response, is that those, whether I have 10 people under a tent or 20 people under a tent buying wine, does not seem to be a wetlands issue. And I don't mean to, to be too direct, but what we're talking about...
Go ahead.
Are the uses that are allowed under the statutes and under the regulations, and the uses are direct sales.
Okay. I, I, we, I'm going to say this, um, that may very well be, okay, that, um, but somehow I don't see the playing, uh, the four events per year, that stuff under planning and zoning, I just don't see where it really ties directly to it. And this goes back to the earlier point, and that where we get the, where we have this thing in so late that we really haven't had a chance to think about it, or I haven't really had a chance to think about it, then I'm starting to feel, well, I don't have enough knowledge to make a fair decision. Now, I'm just talking for myself, I've not asked any members of the commission. Um, but do you have any, do you want to, is there more of your presentation that you wish to get?
I, I certainly understand your, your concern, and I understand that you're handed a lot of verbiage tonight. Um, I think where I would urge the commission to look is, we're looking at exempted uses and exempted proposals for the use of this property and the things that can be done as a matter of right on the property. Uh, I, we have not yet made a wetlands application. We have maintained so far that we don't have to because we're a farm. Um, and what I'd like you to attempt to do is to divorce your thinking from the typical drainage calculations and the flows and the, and the, the kind of stuff that you have to do with a wetlands application, and focus on the uses. I also would not get dissuaded, I don't believe that the zoning definitions are at all informative to this inquiry. I only raised them because they were raised by Attorney Small. And with due respect to Attorney Small, I don't think that they're a wetland concern. What we're looking at is, we have a farm that sells products that it grows, and we're looking for the right to say that because we are a farm, we grow the wine, we sell the wine, and it's direct sales, that we are not subject to the wetlands regulations for what we're talking about.
I believe that this commission is here to protect wetlands, and even though this all may be true, we would really like to work with you to still protect the wetlands in the course of however this project goes forward.
I agree, the commission is here to protect wetlands, uh, but the commission also has its regulations about what can and cannot be done, what is and what is not subject to its jurisdiction. Uh, certainly, they're farmers.
Mm-hmm.
They're there to, to grow till and protect their land. They're not there to destroy their land, they're not there to wipe out their land. There are no wetlands in this area. What is, what there are wetlands is in the adjoining property, which is owned by, uh, Al Rugiero, um, and they're used in concert with 15 Windswept Road for the winery, but they, 12 Windswe, I mean, that's 12 Windswept Road has some wetlands, but 15 has no wetlands. There is a discussion right now whether or not there's an intermittent stream across the driveway in the back. Um, this frankly was sort of news to me, and we're having a wetlands, uh, an engineer take a look at that. Uh, but that is the only, the two hooks for wetlands here are maybe that stream, maybe the, the drainage pattern in the back. I frankly, it's not my role of expertise to know whether it's a stream or not. Uh, and then the idea of surfaced area. Those are the two hooks here.
So, do you want to speak to surface area? You mentioned surface area, would you like to address that?
No, that, that's the, I mean, that's why, the only hooks I see here, potential hooks, are the surface area regulation and whether or not there's a stream in the back.
Can I have my turn?
Certainly.
You just spent 10 or 15 minutes of your client's money on telling us all about our zoning regulations, and if you were so sure that we, you're exempt, I'm not sure why you're here tonight. You're here to tell us that you're exempt and explain why you're exempt? I agree with Ally, we're here to protect the wetlands and the impact with the surroundings. I don't care what he does as far as cars, people, winery, or whatever he's going to do. I'm concerned about the area, what impact it's going to have on the surrounding area. For 15 or 20 years, we never looked at downstream or the neighbors or whatever. Um, we've, the last couple of years, we focused more on what's happening with the neighbors, how, what kind of impact is the neighbors going to have. To me, it would seem like she sort of applied with a wetlands application and got this project passed through it, because it's a farm usage, and there's allowances there. We always give farmers because we know that what they need to do to make the farm work. I don't want to hear about the winery, because if he was doing cows, I'd give him the same permission if he was doing winery. So, the presentation you just gave had no impact or, it, it wasn't a convincing package to convince me that we should say, yes, you're exempt, because I'm still concerned about what's going on out there with the wetlands or the surrounding wetlands. So I'd still like to go out there and see what, what you want to do and how you want to do it, and that, that's going to determine how I, I would vote. So, nobody's, nobody's opposed to, I, I know, at least I'm not opposed to what he wants to do, it's just I want to see, make sure that, that the property, the surrounding property's not going to be impacted by this operation. The other thing is, do we want to go into a public hearing if he's got neighbors, or are the neighbors concerned about other issues that are planning and zoning issues? Now, you brought up planning and zoning issues, I can think of traffic studies and all sorts of things, and the Navy's going to be upset because there's going to be busloads of people coming to taste this man's good wine. But that's not my jurisdiction, and I'm not involved in this. So, we're here for wetlands, and that's basically why I said if we had more time and we could schedule a, a site investigation and actually see what this gentleman wants to do, that, that would be the selling package for me. All right?
What, I certainly, and I'm not here to tell you you have to act on this, this tonight. We're here to make our presentation. I certainly understand your points. You've got a lot of stuff that you've got to work through. Um, and I think...
So I just, is this, is this map 12 or 15 Windswept Hill?
That is, that is... That is, that is 12.
And this map, the big map, is entirely--
It's 15.
The whole part.
If you look at the soil studies, they'll say that within the farm, they looked around the farm wine building, they found no wetlands in that area, of the, of the area. All the area that we're talking about improving has no wetlands on it.
But you're talking about putting a parking area and talking about changing grades and uh, you're changing the aesthetics of the property, right?
We are not talking about changing grades, we are talking about changing aesthetics.
All right. Well, you take a piece of property that has infiltration through, moisture infiltration through it, and you clear it and put a park on it, are you changing the characteristic of that piece of property?
Yes. That will be surfaced area.
Right.
And that, but we are not--
Are you bringing drainage in to prevent, that's just washing down the driveway or going to the neighbors? What are you doing with this runoff that's going to take place with this parking area?
The parking area is, right now, it is hard-packed dirt, used as part of the farm. It will be surfaced with crushed asphalt millings, so it will become somewhat less pervious. But that's the only change really that's going to be made in the parking area.
Yeah, and I'm confused about why, if you want, you're going to do it right, why you wouldn't want to just apply or run it by air and with a wetlands supplemental permit to do this work? And have one meeting for 30 days, we decide and we say, go ahead and give our blessings to it? Or you come in here and tell us, we think we fall under exemptions, so here's one meeting. Now we're talking about a site investigation, there is another meeting. And then there's a third meeting to say, yes, you can go ahead and do what you could have done at the first meeting if you just applied with us and said, hey, this is what we want to do.
Not to be too blunt, but site planning engineers aren't cheap. And, you know, I think we, everything that we're proposing here is an exempt activity. If it is not deemed not to be an exempt activity, then you're correct, we'll be back before your commission. But when the uses appear to be exempt, we thought it was most fruitful to have that discussion first.
Mr. Chairman, can I answer that? Can I say something? We don't regulate uses, planning and zoning regulates uses. We regulate activities. So if you're constructing a parking lot, you could be, you know, a restaurant constructing a parking lot, or you could be a vineyard, winery, sales place constructing a parking lot. We're more interested in the activity of constructing a parking lot, not the uses. We don't, as Commissioner Kern said, we don't get involved in the uses of the music and the this and the that. That's not what we do. It's individual discreet activities. And what, if I may say, with Janice Small's memo, why she threw in the zoning regular provisions with the uses is she was asking me to split it up, take this whole map and split it, which, which of these activities fall under the farm, and which of these activities fall under accessory uses of a farm? For instance, maybe the parking lot would be under the accessory uses because the customers are going to park there, whereas the vineyards grow in the grapes, well, that's the farm. So, that's, that was her intent. She didn't maybe elaborate enough on that, but that's where she was going with that.
If I may, Section 4.1 of your regulations say that the following operations and uses shall be permitted in inland, wetland, and watercourses as a matter of right.
Right, and it says inland, wetlands, and watercourses. You just said you have no inland, wetlands, and watercourses on your property. So you're not planning, this, the original intent was this, was a farmer who wanted to grow onions can grow it in a wet field. He is free to grow those onions in the wet field. He's not free to fill a field to grow corn, if corn doesn't want it as wet as the wetland, as the onions like it. That was the original intent, to allow farmers to keep on using property even if it's wet. I believe that was the original intent of this particular section of the Wetland Act, the state act, the Wetland Act.
And yet, the state act and the town regulations define farming as including all the stuff that we talked about previously.
Okay, and what I would like to do is ask, okay, the three of us have been dominating the conversation, I want to make sure that the other commissioners have a chance to have questions if they have any, you know.
I'm concerned too, your parking lot already has drainage issues, so you don't, you're not concerned about that?
Oh, we are concerned about that. And I don't mean to voice that we're not concerned about wetland issues and we're not concerned about drainage issues. What I'm here to say is that the uses, the activities, the stuff that they want to do out there falls within the exemption. That's what we're here to talk about. We're not here to talk about that we're not concerned about wetlands, they're not, we're concerned with our neighbors' downstream impacts, we're not here to talk about that at all. What we're here to talk about is, the regulations have exemptions, and we suggest that we fall within them. And that's why we're here for a request for determination. That's all we're here to talk about tonight.
Yeah, I think we've been handed a lot here, and I feel myself, I would like to look more into this.
And this, and, yeah, this comes back to what we said before, we're glad, no, we're happy to have had your presentation, but I think you can see the sense of the commission is that, no, we need a lot more information, we need to think about this a lot more. And actually, the things you talked about, you know, normally we have Ms. Page very often coming in here, and then she explains the old, you know, the impacts, and then there's things, well, can you do this, can you do that to make it better? And it may be that's what it's going to come down to, so that I, my feeling is, I think you can see the sense of the commission already that we tabled this matter, and that you may want to consider doing the wetlands application, and then, you know, let your, you know, let this page, who I believe is your engineer, let her, let her walk us through it, and what she, you know, she's done this several--
You're capable.
And what she does, she very often gets the, she very often gets the approval, which is what you want. So at this point, do you have anything to add?
No, I believe that we're going to table.
Okay.
Nick?
Yes.
I, I took it what Janet talked about events and farming. I personally think if we can go out there on a site walk, look and see what he wants to do, and maybe I'm just being nosy now, I want to be first to see it, I don't care how you frame it, it's just, I feel better knowing what's going on out there. That's the problem we've been having with this farm exemption, because it's, it's a gray area for what's, with us, it's a gray area. We've had other applicants come up on this, and we've, you know, we've challenged back and forth about where our grounds are to stand, where, back again, it would have been so much easier just to apply for a wetlands permit, let us voice how we feel to help correct if there's going to be any problems, and let it run. So, I mean, I can't speak for the rest of the commission, but I'd like to go out and see this, see what he actually wants to do, and I'm not looking for him to have engineered prints any more than what we have here tonight. So--
We'd be happy to cooperate with the commission if the commission did decide that a site visit is appropriate.
Okay. I just have a procedural question of Ms. O'Hare. Do we need a motion that, should do a motion to table, and then a motion for a site visit?
No. Mr. Chairman Vitale doesn't ask for motions to table, he tables, he just tables it. The chairman can table some.
Oh, okay. Fine, you've got a situation, you've got the substitute chairman, and, okay, I'm the vice chair, so I'm sitting, sitting in for the chair.
As far as the site visit, you can, if you want to set a discreet site visit for the whole commission, you can do that, or you can just, commissioners can go out when they're free to go out at different times, whatever you'd like.
Okay. Let me then, let me just get rid of the first, suppose the first issue, okay, is that we're going to table your determination request.
And will that be to the next meeting?
Until the next meeting. Okay, so that gives you time to work it out. Now, Nick.
There's one other thing. Because of the fragile, the fragility of this project, I want to know if there's any input from the abutting neighbors, how do we handle concerns from the abutting property owners, or if there's, anybody has questions on this?
Well, it's not a public hearing. This is a public meeting.
It's a public--
And usually, Chairman Vitale will let people from the audience speak, even if it's just a public meeting, if it's not too long an agenda we have in front of us.
I would like to see if it takes permission or whatever we need to do tonight, if the applicants comfortable with that. If there's any public concern in the audience, they can speak tonight so we can address this, not next month, but we can, they can be aware of it and they can be addressed tonight.
Okay, I would just hope they keep it to wetlands issues, though.
Right.
If I may speak on that, and again, it's your hearing, not mine. It's your meeting, not mine. This has not been noticed as a public hearing.
Right.
And your regulations say you shall not hold a public hearing unless certain conditions are met, certain notices are met. To open a non-public hearing to public comment and call it a public meeting really changes it to be a public hearing.
Can we address it as joys and concerns on your project? And not, is that, would that fulfill--
The only thing I'm worried about is the Freedom of Information Act, and whether or not this has been properly noticed as a public hearing. And it, so far, it has not been advertised and noticed as a public hearing. And what I, the only thing I'm worried about is preserving that this is done correctly under the Freedom of Information Act. And I'm not your counsel, I'm only offering my thoughts, but my opinion, for what it's worth, is that if it is not noticed as a public hearing, you should not entertain public comment and public testimony.
All right, so then you're, you're accepting the fact that if it doesn't happen tonight, it happens next month or the following month, that you're willing to go that far with it if it needs to be?
The only thing I'm responding to, sir, is, is how this meeting is held tonight. And I don't, I'm not looking to prolong it, I'm not looking to extend the agony, I'm not looking to do anything of the sort. I only think, the only knee-jerk concern I have, and I will admit, it's off the top of my head concern, is how this meeting was noticed, and whether or not it was noticed as a public hearing, when your regulations say you shall not have a public hearing unless certain conditions are met. That's the only reaction I have to--
All right. So to do it legally, then, if there's a complaint, they should go out in the hallway and tell you on your way out the door, if somebody in the audience has something to say?
I am more than happy to talk to anybody to find out what their complaints are. I'm sure Ms. O'Hare is happy to talk to anybody to find out what their complaints are, to deal with those complaints, and I have been in communication with Ms. O'Hare. I take it I will continue to be in communication with Ms. O'Hare. I think, again, for what it's worth, that that is the appropriate method to get this done. That the public, you know, these plans are filed in the, in the office, they can be commented on. The only thing I'm concerned about is how it's done right now, right here. That's my only concern. I'm not trying to say people shouldn't be able to voice their concerns, it's the method by which they do so, under the Freedom of Information Act.
All right, so Erin, then, when can one of the commissioners deem this as a significant activity so we can put it into a public hearing to hear public concerns? When does this take place? After we deem that this needs an application and it's not agricultural use?
Okay, if you're thinking of, okay, maybe what, there's three ways the commission can have a public hearing. I think this is where you're going, Nick. You can have, you have to have a public hearing if it's deemed a significant activity. You have to have a public hearing if more than 25 people or more have petitioned you to hold a public hearing, or the chairman can decide that it's of enough public interest to warrant holding a public hearing. Those are the three reasons you could, you hold a public hearing. So--
But we're in the, we're in the process tonight of deeming of agricultural exemption. Nothing can be done tonight on this avenue until we resolve this issue, right? In other words, this gentleman needs to know yes or no, we deem this as an agricultural use and they're exempt. So once we decide whether it is or it isn't, then the next step would be, if it's deemed is farm exempt, then it just goes away.
Correct.
If it's not deemed farm exempt, like Janet talked about other issues here, then we can go into a wetlands application where we can have a public hearing and drag it out for three or four or five months, whatever it takes to get concerns addressed before we actually give them permission to do this project.
That's true, and, that's true, and you would call it a significant impact if you wanted to go that route, I guess.
Okay. Either for soil types or whatever, and there doesn't have to be wetlands on the property, it could be just concerns downstream, upstream, left or right, so--
Well, we do have a definition of significant impact, so it has to, you know, have one of those criteria, you know?
Okay.
Which it might have, I haven't looked at it from that perspective, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, then, let me put it to you, I mean, as I say, we normally do this, it's informal, okay? If you maintain your objective, we won't. But, you know, be advised that, you've heard this conversation, whether a public hearing is required, whether it's, and, but let me also say, public hearing regarding wetlands only.
Correct.
Because that's all we do, so, I mean, somebody's got some comment of noise or anything like that, we don't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't entertain or we couldn't act on that. Just, I'm sorry, were you about to speak, or?
No, I was--
Oh, okay.
Inferring.
So, at this point--
Mr. Chairman, I, again, I don't mean to interrupt, but if people want to speak tonight, and that the commission is, is okay with whether or not this has been noticed, and whether it's formal or informal, I'm certainly, I have no authority to cause people to stop speaking. I am not intending to cause people to stop speaking. If you want to entertain those comments, I have concerns under the Freedom of Information Act, but I am not your attorney. And all I'm doing is, I'm trying to flag an issue and give the commission an opportunity to respond. Maybe I shouldn't offer my advice to the commission.
No, no, we like, no, we, no, we have your view, I mean, and you are representing your client, and you have to protect his interests, and if you, you know, if you believe we shouldn't do it, then we can accommodate it, we just explain to you that, what some of the downstream effects are, and if you're happy with the downstream effects, that's okay. I mean, if you're probably not happy with them, I'm sure you're not, but--
If we, if we have someone talk tonight, and there hasn't been a notice to the general public, we don't want it to come back later and say, I never had a chance to speak on this.
Joe, I'm more concerned about, if there's somebody in the audience that wants, is opposed or has a concern about what you want to do, you address it tonight to expedite the procedure a lot faster than to go through a long dragged-out process so this person can get up and say something. This person may want to get up and speak on your behalf, I don't know. I just know if there's concern, I'd like to get it behind us so we can move this project forward. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for freedom of information, I don't want to break the law. It just seems like the good old handshake days are gone, when we get legal advice involved at all extents, it get a little bit longer and a little bit more dragged out than it should be, because the good old days are gone. But I believe, I know if I was in your shoes, I'd say, well, if somebody has a concern, I would want to know about it, you know, so you could explain that and work the issues out so that it runs smooth and it slides right through. That's all I'm suggesting, I'm not trying to throw a wrench into the soup.
I, I have just stated what I said for the record, but we don't object if somebody wants to get up and speak, and that's, that's fine with me.
All right.
And I'm sorry we had that long discourse.
No, that, don't be sorry, that's part of your job, you're representing a client. Okay? Now, on that, is there, and again, I've been saying to them, we're, we're here only to discuss comments regarding to wetland issues. We're not, this is not zone, and if it's a planning and zoning thing, we don't listen to it. So if any, on that happy, or, on that note, is there anybody who would like to comment regarding the, any impact on wetlands or watercourses? Okay? If you would-- If you would, just, you can use this microphone over here, and then, but you, and just please identify yourself, name and address.
Vivian Jones, 8 Windswept Hill. I'm glad that you're tabling this tonight. As Mr. Marr had mentioned, my first comment was going to be that there was no notice. If I hadn't called one of the town departments on another matter, I wouldn't have even known that this was coming up tonight, because there was no agenda anywhere. But my comment is, if, I'm glad you're going to do a site visit. And I would like to encourage you to do your site visit, whether it's collectively or individually, during, maybe later in the, in the week, or on a weekend, or on a, on a more peak day, to see the impact on the environment that this has. You have, first of all, they, they're still in violation from the beginning.
The zoning, is it mayor?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the wetlands with the asphalt. The asphalt on the driveway was supposed to be impervious material. Isn't that wetlands? Because there's a tributary there that goes right to Muddy River, and this goes right by it. And they were told by Inland Wetlands to remove that, and this is seven years now. So that would be, one of my concerns is the amount of traffic going by that little tributary. And also, I'd like to know that in the meantime, until you do this next hearing and make a decision, will there be, can you make any kind of, I don't know if you can, if you can tell them or suggest to them that to only park the vehicles in the parking area? Because when they get busy, it's on the grass, it's everywhere. I'm afraid, we have wells, and I'm afraid that, we don't know what the buses and limousines and cars are dripping, and it goes right downhill, right into the water. And I don't know how far down it goes. I'm, I'm not in that field, so I don't know if it would ever get in my well, but that is a concern. And we're also concerned about the change in the runoff with, it says a patio, but when I saw one of the plans, it was like a 50 by something patio with a fountain. And that's going to change, that's going to change the water runoff. I, I, these are just concerns that, I'm really glad that you're going to go do a site survey. And I would wish that you would go during operating hours, just to see what it's really like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Clay Smith. I'm here for another reason, but I just thought I'd bring up something. As far as the exemption goes for agricultural purposes, from what I understand, manufacturing and processing of agricultural, agricultural products such as wine is not covered as farming. It is covered, if it was covered as farming, then let's say an off-site building that processed and manufactured wine would also fall under that farming criteria. It's just a thought I just wanted to throw out.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that with us. Anyone else? You, you have one more addition comment?
Yes, I forgot something. After sitting here and listening to all this talk, I really don't have any idea what they want to be exempt from. I know they don't like our regulations, so they rewrote one. I don't know what they're asking to be exempt from. Is it all our regulations of inland wetlands? Is it like they don't want to have to do any of, I don't know what they're asking for. I live next door, I would like to, it, it impacts me. I would like to know, understand what is being asked.
Counsel, would you like to, would you like to respond to that, or?
Yes, yes, I would. We are looking to be exempt for the uses that are defined as farming in the state statutes and the recs, and the town recs. That's what we're looking to be exempt from. Section 4.1A of the regulation, your regulations, and section 1-1Q of the state statutes define what farming is. That's what we're being, looking to be exempted from.
Farm uses?
I don't know what that means. I mean, it's, it seems like the activities have become the primary and the farming is the secondary, so I, I don't, I don't understand how it's really a farm. Thank you.
Okay, now we've, we've tabled, we've had comments. Say, you'll hit Ms. O'Hare.
I just have one comment to explain something that was mentioned about the asphalt on the driveway. That's the first time I ever heard of the asphalt on the driveway, but I will say, I did see a memo at Planning and Zoning, that under the, the, under the watershed regulation part of the zoning regulations, apparently pervious paving materials is required. So the water division is looking regarding this parking lot expansion, or the paving of this parking lot, is looking for, is asking for pervious pavement, which is interesting. That is an interesting thing that we, if, if we look at that for the drainage of that parking area, we will consider whether or not it would be pervious.
That's where I brought it up before, Erin, because how it falls into that category where, I would feel better going out there to see what was actually going to, looking for slope and grade, and how he's going to do the runoff, where it's going to go. I'm not, I'm not opposed to what he wants to do, and, and I don't, like I said, I don't care if he's got cows, or he's going to have a winery. My concern is that we're, we're protecting the surrounding area on his, on the site, and it's going to work what he wants to do. Many times we've had engineers come in here with their costly plans, and we've had to modify the plans to make it better than what they originally, you hired them to do. So maybe we're just, we're free, free suggestions, or whatever you want to call it, but most of the engineers work with us and, and we have a compromise for everybody's interest. And, and I'm sure you don't want to have a dirt driveway or a dirt parking lot to have your customers come dressed up to have a glass of wine. So, I mean, we both know that we want, you want to have it as stable as possible and conform to regulations as possible. So that's all, we want to see it's done right, that's all.
Well, the zoning regulations do say that we have to have a dust-free surface as a driveway. And also, the firemen also say that it has to be a surfaced roadway for emergency access. We have no asphalt pavement on our property, except for the apron was actually paved. The rest of it was just reclaimed, ground-up asphalt.
Okay.
So I don't know where everybody's coming around saying we paved our driveway here.
No, she's not saying that. She's letting you know what the Water and Sew Department, that their, where their regulations read, how that can be handled. That's all she's telling you. She's not saying you have a paved driveway. She's just stating that Water Department, and the Water and Sew Department have a regulation that affects, could affect, if you did have it paved, it would affect that area. Okay? So if you have a paved apron, which Planning and Zoning made you put in probably for the, for the premises, then that's part of the zoning regulations.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to move on to setting a, setting a site visit. And I, I'm going to defer to you on this, Nick. Do you think we should all go out there? Or do you think, or do you have a sub?
I personally, I like going out.
Yeah, I think the, after work, 5:00, 5:30 thing works well, because we can be there.
The group effort is a way to go. So if you have any questions, you can bounce it off one another, so whatever's.
So it's, okay, it's the commission sense that we'd like to have, that would go out and do a site visit. I don't have a calendar with me. Do you have any?
I don't have a calendar with me either, but I know that my Thursday's.
Your Thursdays are good?
Thursdays, Thursdays, not this week, Friday, but I can't, because I don't really get to, especially if it's earlier.
Okay, and I want to make sure that the applicant has an opportunity to be prepared, instead of we just come out and, hey, you know, and, but are you, but are you suggesting a week from Thursday?
We do a week from Thursday.
So it would be the 14th?
A week from Thursday, would that, would that be the 14th?
So it's the 7th.
Yeah, I don't, I left my phone on.
What's that say, the date?
8:28 PM.
What's the date under, June 8th?
June 6th.
June 6th, okay. So 6 and 7 is 13.
I thought you said a week from Thursday.
Right. It would be the 14th.
So it would be the 14th.
The 14th.
Thursday.
Okay, Thursday to 14th.
Thursday to 14th.
What time?
5:30, 5:30 PM, fine for you.
It's 5:30. Does, that's not a busy day of your week, is it, as far as customers?
We're busy all the time.
Okay. That's good to hear.
Is there a place for us to park then?
Plenty, yes, there is.
Okay. Okay, as, you all set with that, Erin?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, I think?
Anything, anything else?
Thank you, I appreciate your time, I appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Thank you for coming. See a new applications, application 18 dash 5.133 Malby Lane Garage, request for administrative, oh, you've already done that?
Yes, that one.
Oh, you're just, okay, you're just noting that one?
And the next two were just approved by Chairman Vitale, those, the next.
Okay, so we don't have to discuss those. Now we have this.
Oh, I'm just going to say the addresses, though. 24 Oxford Trail for a garage and deck, and 91 Farm Hill Road for an addition.
Okay.
They were just granted administrative approval.
Okay, so now we have A18 dash 6.25 Research Parkway, significant impact activity. I just did a quick scan, and again, this is all the information that goes with this. Mr. Senaviva, would you like to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For your record, my name is Dennis Senaviva, and I'm an attorney with the Senaviva Law Firm, and I represent the owner and applicant 5 Research Parkway Wallingford LLC. The application was filed yesterday. We brought in a pretty good set of papers for the commission and Erin to review, several maps and reports. In an effort, you'll note from a cover letter that I've sent in as a chairman, I've asked that the commission tonight not only accept the application, but deem the proposed activity as significant, because within the application, there's a proposal to fill 2,465 square feet of wetlands. This site has about 28.5 acres of wetlands. We're proposing to fill .057 percent. It's a very modest filling, but nonetheless, even if it was one square foot, it'd be a significant activity under your regulations. And so what we have done is we've submitted the fee for the public hearing. We would ask that you determine this to be a significant activity and schedule a public hearing for July 18th.
Ms. O'Hare?
I just want to say, I did check with the law department. Yes, you can, I, I wasn't sure you could take any action tonight, because this is the first night, but, but yes, you can set the public hearing, because they have come in self-declared as a significant impact. You can go ahead and set the public hearing.
Okay, and that's, okay.
I do want to add, then, you, you have, how many, what's the square footage, or the footage for abutting property owners?
100 now.
It's only 100?
Yeah. Your new regulations.
Okay.
But, you know, 180 acres, we got a few abutters.
Yeah, you don't have to. Okay, and this, incident, entertain a motion regarding application 18 dash 6.25 Research Parkway, Wallingford, Connecticut, be deemed a significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A18 dash 6.25 Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, be deemed a significant activity.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need to set up a sidewalk? Do we need to go out there if it's going to be a significant activity?
I'm sorry, I think you can't make that motion that you just made.
Why not?
Because that's an action, that's an action. The law department said you just set a public hearing. They've already decided there is significant impact.
Okay.
Unless you object, Attorney Senaviva. I don't, I didn't ask directly if you could declare it a significant impact, because they already had, so I, I'm unsure about that point, but I am sure you can set a public hearing for the significant impact activity which has just been received tonight.
You've got me, teaching time to be, normally we go for, normally we make a determination as a significant activity.
After the presentation, yes.
And he's made his presentation saying?
No, no, no. He, he's not allowed to present tonight, actually. He just is here to make sure you set the public hearing.
Sounds to me like he's in a hurry.
Wait a minute, wait, now, okay, let's take it step at a time. He would like it declared a public, wait, you would like it declared, your application declared to be a significant activity, so that that would in turn trigger a public hearing next month?
Well, not exactly. He's already come in, he's paid the extra $375 for significant impact activity. He's self-declared. He didn't wait for you guys to declare it. That would have happened in July.
Okay, so we're not going to, so you're saying all we have to do is, we need a motion to schedule a public hearing? Or can I just, by my own court, say, well, we'll schedule a public hearing?
You would act to schedule a public hearing.
That's all, and I can do that by myself, I don't need?
Actually, I'm not sure, Dennis.
I mean, I think it's probably preferred that it be a motion from the commission.
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to, okay, in this case, we can withdraw the first motion, and can, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for application A18 dash 6.25 Research Parkway.
I think under our regulations, we have to schedule a public hearing because he's already.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so we're just, but the motion, we need a motion then to schedule a public hearing?
Yes, for July 18th, right.
Okay, so may I have that motion?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A18 dash 6.25 Research Parkway, 5 Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, have a public hearing scheduled on the next meeting, July 18th.
Do I have a second on the motion?
I have a second on the motion.
Any discussion?
The only discussion is, you're presenting this tonight because of, you're going to fill in 25,000 yards of wetlands?
Twenty, 2,500.
Oh, 2,500.
2,450.
24 feet, square feet?
Square feet. Mr. Chairman, could you, to the motion, just add 7:00. I didn't hear it's 7:00.
Okay. It's 7:00 on July 18th.
Go for the discussion, call for vote. Robert?
Second motion.
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Thank you.
Election of officers, someday, I'm.
Someday we're going to.
You know, yeah, by this time, we aren't, we're going to have to have two elections, because I think the term of the people should have been elected.
You're right.
Yeah, we're going to need two elections, okay. Maybe next month, yeah, okay. You've got violations, a cease and desist order, 55 Condrackee Lane, and you have some, you got to note, there's a public hearing required for that?
Yes, let me read that from the regulations, might be helpful. You can come forward. Okay, this is an enforcement action.
Enforcement act?
Yes, it's a cease and correct order. It's kind of an emergency, so the property owners have agreed to.
It's kind of an emergency, so the property owners have agreed to this action, which is called a cease and correct order, which is used in emergency situations involving wetlands or watercourses.
How is it an emergency situation?
Okay, we'll get into it, I just wanted to say that they were issued this cease and correct order yesterday, and in our regulations under section fourteen, they have to have a hearing within ten calendar days to provide them the ability, the opportunity to be heard and to discuss the matter. So this is a hearing. And, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to get into the particulars?
No, I'm, no, but you, this... I mean, he needs a public hearing, doesn't he, need a public hearing on July eighteenth?
No, 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 no. When you issue a cease and desist order, or when you issue a cease and correct order, you have to hold a public hearing within ten days. In this case, the order was issued yesterday, so we're holding the hearing now.
Doesn't the public have to know it's being held tonight?
I'm sorry?
Does the public have to know it's being held tonight?
This, it was posted yesterday at five o'clock. Yes, it was posted, it was noticed.
So that falls into the, we've done everything we're supposed to on time?
Yes, yes, it was noticed. Yes.
So, so in this case, then, yeah, we, we, we would like to hear what you have to say, huh?
Yes. I'm sorry, you want me to present?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you ask, you, you had offered to explain this, and then...
Okay.
Let the, the other, the parties have their say.
Okay. Tonight, I handed out a copy of the cease and correct order issued to this property, which is fifty-five Kandraki Lane. This is the site of the Quinnipiac Valley Center, which is a skilled nursing and rehab facility. So that's the order in front of you. Do you want to take a minute to read the order before, I mean, to yourselves before we proceed?
Yeah, I think we'd, I think we would.
So, Aaron, am I understanding that we're expediting this tonight because it's an emergency?
Yes, the, I was called out there, oh gosh, a few weeks ago. This is now, it has two lane, there's only one access to this facility. It's a two-lane driveway access. Right now, only one lane is open.
Right.
Because of a failure in that road construction, having to do with the culverts underneath the roadway, and so they have to address this as soon as possible.
Right, so if it falls under an emergency procedure?
Yes.
It couldn't be done by administrative approval?
Well...
For public safety reasons?
No, that's a good question, good comment, but no. Anytime it's a wetland or a water course, administrative is not allowed to cover that. If you're building a shed thirty feet from a lake, that's okay, but not, not in the wetland, you can't, that wouldn't cover it. So in this case, it's a river, so no.
All right, now, do we open up another bag of worms about having permits from the state because it's a water course, as far as an encroachment or any activity in a water course area? Somewhere, you have to use a little bit of common sense here. There's an emergency with a, a lane failure, it's in public interest for the emergency to repair it, wouldn't it make sense to either have a special meeting, a phone vote, or something, to expedite this as quick as possible?
Oh, well, yeah, that's tonight. In other words, they, they got me this, they, let's see, what happened, yes, this happened, this all came together very quickly.
Okay, so you weren't out there a week or two ago and saw it?
I was out there maybe three weeks ago, but they just decided what the fix would be. They were scrambling, what is the fix? And, because there's several options, and they just decided in the last few days what approach they're gonna use. They're gonna use a slip, they're gonna slip line it. They didn't know if they had to take out the whole culvert and start from scratch.
All right, okay.
So that's what took a few weeks, yes, it took about two weeks to decide that, yeah.
All right, I just, yeah, okay, we'll go forward.
All righty, so, the summons, so the summons substances, they've got a bed culvert here, and so they're gonna, what, they're gonna slip a culvert inside the culvert?
Well, they can explain, their engineer's here tonight, he can explain it, but when I did go out there, I did find a few other violations that need to be cleaned up. I mean, a few other issues, they had a washout of their previous driveway repair. It deposited a lot of, a lot of stone in the water, in the stream channel. That's, it's gonna get cleaned up under this, they have some other issues, but why don't they present their project right now?
Well, it's a good idea.
State your name.
State your name, though.
Good evening, for the record, my name is, is that echoing, or is it just me?
No.
Okay.
He can turn it down in here.
Okay, I'm sorry, good evening, for the record, my name is Mike Ott. I'm a professional engineer and a licensed land surveyor with Summerhill Civil Engineers in Madison. Jeff Turner is with me also, he is the executive director of the Quinnipiac Valley Center, and Clay Smith is the maintenance director of the Quinnipiac Valley Center. And Rosalyn Page is with us also, in the audience, who has done the survey work for us on this project. So we, just to clarify, we actually requested the cease and correct order. It, it's my understanding that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, it's, I've been involved in this in the past a couple of times. It's my understanding that the only way for an inland wetland agency to issue kind of an emergency permit, to expedite a process, is to go through this cease and correct order.
Can I just stop you for a minute, there's a procedural issue. Do we have to declare that the, we're having a public hearing right now? Because I didn't do that.
Okay, I thought we did, but go ahead.
Okay, I didn't, okay. I hereby declare this to be a public hearing.
So we, just to, I just want to make sure that the, the commission understands, we actually requested, I, I contacted Aaron and discussed the, the, this option, this tool that we have to expedite the approval process so that we could, given that this is an urgent matter, so that we could perform activities within a water course and inland wetlands. So Aaron came out at, at my request, and when Aaron came out, just as she said, and as she says in the order, she noticed some things, some activities that had taken place in the past that, that properly needed a regulated activity permit. So we, those, those issues will be, we fully intend to take care of those issues, but the, the, the primary matter here is, as Aaron explained, the driveway to this facility is the only access point, it's the only way in and out. The driveway crosses a water course. There are twin sixty-inch diameter structural plate metal culverts beneath the driveway. They are in poor shape, I'll, I'll explain more a little bit later. And they have started to cause sinkholes in the driveway. The material, there's, there's ten and a half or so feet of earth cover over the top of these five-foot diameter culverts, and because they are in poor shape, their joints have, have been displaced. Material that, some of that earth cover is, has gone down into the culverts and now into the water course, and that's caused sinkholes in the driveway above. In addition, within this driveway are the sanitary sewer, water, and gas utility services for the facility. So I know you don't have any maps, and you don't have any photographs, but hopefully I've, I've painted a, a good enough picture. This is the only way in and out of this facility. It's a one hundred and sixty or so, Jeff, bed facility. And its major utility services are within this driveway, that, above these culverts that are failing. So we requested the cease and correct order in order to expedite the approval process so that we could do the work required to make, to rehabilitate these culverts and make the driveway safe and passable. The issues that Aaron noticed when she came out, again, were done in the past. Those do, they did need a permit, they do need to be corrected, and we fully intend to correct those. But again, the, the primary issue is to be able to get in and fix these culverts.
And this is point, and how do you intend, how do you intend to do that? Can you just briefly discuss how you're gonna do that?
Fix the culverts?
Yeah.
Sure, so they are five feet in diameter, as I explained, they're structural plates, they're made of four pieces of metal that form a circle. They're bolted, and they're bolted together, common form of pipe construction. They were installed in the early seventies, maybe seventy-two, seventy-three. They are severely corroded on the bottom, the bottom of the culvert, and probably about eighteen inches up from the bottom, there happens to be a bolt line where the bottom plate is bolted to the side plates, and the corrosion is right through that bolt line, and that caused the plates to shift, and the culverts to compress. And there are sections of the culverts where between joints, there's an eight-inch difference. One, one structural plate section has gone down about seven to eight inches. So there are several ways to rehabilitate the cul, the culverts. One method, obviously, to solve this problem is to shut down the driveway, excavate that ten and a half feet of cover over the pipes away, and replace the culverts. Because this is the only way, this is the only point of access, that's, that's, it's feasible, but it would require the construction of a temporary bridge crossing of the water course, because we can't obviously shut that driveway down. So we are proposing, we've, we've, Rosalyn's firm has done some survey work, we've gone inside the culverts and inspected them, we've taken measurements inside to see how far out around they are, and how far the joints have displaced, and we believe we can rehabilitate them rather than replace them. And the method we're choosing is to, as Aaron described, is to slip line the culverts, which is in simple terms, to push a smaller diameter pipe inside the large, the existing larger diameter pipes, and to grout, to, under pressure, to grout the annular space, the space between the outside of the liner pipe and the inside of the existing culvert, all the way around its circumference. That grout restores the structural integrity, because it fills the gap between the new liner pipe and the, and the, the inside of the existing pipe. So we've, in order to do that, the pipes come in about, the liner pipes come in about twenty-foot length sections from the, the easiest access to these culverts. Again, these are five-foot diameter culverts with ten and a half feet of fill above them. So they are, the road, the driveway is some fifteen feet plus above the water course. So the driveway is up quite high, if you can picture that. So the, the banks are relatively steep, so the, the easiest way to access these culverts is on the upstream side. Contractor will have to go down the bank with the excavator, create a, a, a level platform down near the water course channel on one side, the side closest to Kandraki Lane. And, and I'll, I'll explain, there's, there's other activities I'll explain in a minute, but in simple terms, insert these new, the, the pipe from the upstream side into these culverts, which are fifty feet long, by the way. So there will be two probably lengths of pipe that will get inserted in the fifty-foot length of culverts. Then they block the downstream end, and they pump the grout in that I talked about, and, and they pull the, pull all the material out that they use to pump the grout in, back their machinery out, restore the bank again, and re-vegetate it. So that's in simple terms. There happens to be, at the inlet to these culverts, a debris dam that's some eighteen inches high. So right at the inlet, there is almost a vertical drop down to the bottom of the culverts. There's been, who knows how long this took to form, and how long it's been in place, but there's a significant debris dam at the inlets to these culverts. So imagine a five-foot diameter circle, and right at the face of that circle is a good eighteen inches of material that's built up over the years. I probed it with a soil probe, and, and I can get down through it, but there's likely wood in there, there's likely branches in there that have helped, you know, allowed the debris to, to collect over the years. So I also walked upstream with a soil probe, some thirty to forty feet, and I could feel that there's, you could feel the sediment that's been deposited. Some thirty or forty feet upstream, you, the sediment depth goes down to nothing, and you have a, a gravelly water course bottom. So that, that debris dam, which is actually part of Aaron's order, needs to be removed, otherwise we can't push those liner pipes through the five-foot diameter culverts. So when the contractor goes down the bank and builds his platform, the, one of the first things after erosion and sediment controls are in place, especially downstream, one of the first things he's gonna have to do is remove that debris dam, and remove that sediment that is built up for however long it's taken. The sediment, obviously, has to be deposited in an upland area, away from the water course and the wetlands, it'll be put in a truck and, and, and removed off-site. In addition, the bottom of the culverts, the metal culverts are so corroded, they're perforated, you can actually poke a rod right down through the bottom of the culverts. So the contractor is then gonna have to go in and do some invert repair, we call it, in the bottom part of the circle, he's gonna have to do some repair for the length of the culverts, otherwise when we pump the grout in, the grout will go out through those holes, and we won't be able to re-establish the structural integrity. So that's, that's a pretty good description of, of what needs to be done. Not, the only, the only prior issue I've addressed here is the removal of the debris dam. In a, in a minute, we can talk about the, you know, the, the prior activities that need, that now need to be addressed, but that's, that's a pretty good, I think, description of what needs to be done for the culverts.
A couple of questions for you. You mentioned going from a five-foot pipe to what size diameter? To down to what size, oh, five foot to what?
One of them, one of the culverts is in better shape than the other, so the one that's in better shape, it, it looks like will be able to get a, a fifty-inch outside diameter. I don't know yet what the wall thickness will be, because all the manufacturers are different.
Right.
But it's likely to be probably two inches, so you have to subtract four inches, so you're talking forty-six inches, maybe?
So you're roughly going from a five-foot to a four-foot diameter?
Correct, in one of them.
In one of them, okay.
The second one is in worse shape, because it has that eight-inch joint deflection that I talked about. We're probably only gonna get maybe a thirty-six inch outside diameter.
And what kind of, what kind of impact do you think that's gonna have on the flow of water?
So that's, that's part of what I had to do, so I've done a, again, this is all happening pretty fast, but I've looked at the drainage area to the culverts, it's about point eight-five square miles. Five hundred and, I can't do the math in my head, but it's about five hundred and forty or so acres. There's six hundred and forty square, acres in a square mile. So six hundred and forty times point eight-five, whatever that is, I think it's about five forty or so. So I've looked at the drainage area, and I've developed peak discharges, the flow rates that are, that will be seen at that culvert, to see whether the decrease in diameter of the, of the two pipes can handle those flows. Luckily, because, because of the steep banks, and because there's fifteen feet or so from the stream bed to the driveway, there's a lot of what we call... the stream bed to the driveway, there's a lot of what we call allowable headwater, so we can build up, as the water tries to flow through the culverts, we can, the water surface can build up without affecting, um, anything on this site or even upstream on neighboring properties upstream. It would be a different story if the road, if the driveway was really low
Sure.
to the water course, and we didn't have that allowable headwater that, you know, so we, we're, we're lucky in that regard.
So, you don't foresee that being a problem, going from a five-foot to three-foot diameter pipe?
Correct.
Okay.
And part of what I have to do is, um, once we hopefully get your approval tonight under this order, we need to sit down, I've got more engineering work to do, I've gotta sit down with the contractor, I want, we have to come up with a, with a specific plan, submit it to Erin, talk to Rob, your town engineer, about it before we actually get out there and, and, and do the work.
Good. And one more question, and you mentioned a grout. What specifically contains in the grout? Is it, um, is it a hardened substance afterwards?
It hardens.
It hardens?
Cement.
It's a cement?
Product that's, that's, um, very loose.
So, it's not gonna eventually, over time, get washed out later on?
No.
Going further on down?
No, the whole, the whole idea is, it, it, it hardens and has strength.
Okay.
And the whole idea is that structural integrity I talked about?
Sure.
You know, between the liner pipe and the, the, the existing pipe, that gets filled with that grout.
That gap, okay.
That hardens up and has strength.
That's all I had, thanks.
Yep.
No questions?
I'm good.
Me?
I'm sorry.
You ask me all the time. Thank you.
Yes, excellently, would you like?
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
You got any type of a S and E control plan in place, or have you designed it yet?
Oh, I've done no, no plans yet, but we have to, that's what I was saying earlier.
Yeah.
We will, and we have to submit that to Erin.
Yeah.
And I, and I'll also be talking to Rob, your, your town engineer.
All right, and then we talked about, you said there was silt upstream, you had silt base, the base of the, uh?
Yes.
There's silt on the upstream side or the downstream side?
Upstream, because of that debris dam I talked about.
Yeah.
And that will come out, we will remove that.
Okay, um, what are you gonna do with the spoils?
Um, just as, I, I think I described it earlier, it has, it will be put in a truck and hauled off-site and disposed of properly.
Okay.
Where it will not be disposed of on-site.
Okay. Um, cleanup, I mean, you're gonna be taking, uh, to get down in there with the excavator, you're gonna be taking foliage out, right? Trees or shrubs or whatever's there, you're talking about ten or fifteen-foot drop to get that excavator down in there. Are you gonna use a long-reach excavator so that he's gonna position himself, I know, I imagine, into the brook so that you can pu- push these sleeves in? How are you gonna do this?
So, so the, one of the, we'll, we'll get to this, but one of the activities that is taking place that, that should've had a regulated activity permit, we understand, is, um, some trees were cut on, on the, on the bank that we are proposing to go down. There's already been some vegetation removal, so when we go down, when the contractor goes down, he's gonna create a, a level platform, he will not get in the water course, he's gonna, he's gonna have to remove two or three existing trees, relatively small, just so he can swing, so he can, you know, his arm can swing. He's gonna be able to swing those pipes over the water course and then push them through the culverts, he will not have to put the machine right in the water course.
Have you done this before?
Yes.
All right, and so there's no chance that the pipe's gonna collapse? When you push the new one in, there's not gonna be a chance the pipe's gonna collapse on you, and you're gonna lose everything?
It, it shouldn't, because we're not, you don't push against the pipe, you actually, uh, you build, you build skids.
You're just lining it?
Built wooden skids, kinda, to slide the pipe on, you know what I mean? You're not pushing against the existing pipe, doesn't even know you're pushing the new pipe through it, until you do the, until you do the grout, that's where the interaction happens.
Have you seen the high-flow water line in the pipe now? Does there any sign, proof of, uh, stain or anything?
Yeah, and, yeah, unfortunately, it's right at that bolt line that I was describing, yeah, it's about eighteen inches up.
So, what's your headspace, open, open headspace? I'm concerned about you're gonna restrict it, you may not have adequate flow on high-flow days, we have, in the last five or ten years, we've had some severe thunderstorms, flash flooding, basically, we get three or four inches of rain in a shot. Do you see any signs that those pipes weren't adequately sized for what this project?
No, no, and theoretically, I've done the hydraulics, as I was explaining to the other commissioner, you know, theoretically, design-wise, I've already done the hydraulics, and I know that these size, these pipes that are, these liner pipes that are gonna go in, will adequately handle the, the full range of peak discharges, up to the hundred-year peak discharge.
Okay, um, yeah, that, so only if you've done all your homework, and it's, it's gonna, and, and what are you gonna guarantee, this, how long it's gonna last?
I, I'm not gonna guarantee anything.
Well, I mean-
But the pipe, the pipe manufacturers obviously have a, have a guarantee on the life of the pipe. These will not, by the way, be metal liners, they will be, uh, uh-
PVC.
-a polyethylene or PVC, or, there's a, there's, there's all kinds of options now, there's steel-ribbed PVC.
Yeah.
Steel-ribbed reinforced polyethylene, uh, there's plain polyethylene, there's plain PVC, there's all kinds of options.
Are they natural bottom, or they're, they're sleeved, they're just a piece of pipe?
It'll be, it's a full circular pipe.
All right, what, what's gonna give us aquatic life, uh, access to go up and downstream? One of the things?
I, um, I do not think, I, I understand why that's done and, and when it's done.
Yeah.
Um, I do not think we can do that in this case. We already, we are already going to restrict those sixty-inch pipes, obviously, to line them, and to put natural stream bed material like we would normally do, or depress the culverts, which we cannot do, and I'll, and I'll tell you, actually, we can't depress them, if you think about it, because we can't lower the sixty-inch pipes.
You're locked in.
Right.
What I'm concerned with is gonna be the buildup, after you put your sleeves in, everything's gonna be, everything's gonna have to rise, you're, you're talking about grout or some type of a concrete four inches?
Three, probably.
Three?
Three to four, three to four, yeah.
And you're saying that the, 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 the ton of way you're gonna do this, there won't, shouldn't, there shouldn't be any change in, uh, high-volume storms? It should be adequate to handle all this stuff?
The, the pipes should be adequate to handle the, the, the standard design storms that we design culverts, carrying a water course of this size with a driveway for this kind of facility, which would be the hundred-year, yeah. But to, to get back to your question specifically, we can, we cannot, in this instance, provide, uh, depress a culvert or provide natural stream bed material in the culvert, we, we, public safety actually is overriding, uh, uh, um, aquatic organism design, which is what we would, if this was brand-new, that's what we would do, but we, in this instance, we just can't.
You say the sleeves are twenty feet long, the new sleeves, what's the length of the old?
A little bit longer, possibly.
What's the old sleeve diameter, or the length of the old sleeve going on the driveway?
There are, there are two twenty-foot sections and a one-ten-foot section, so there's three joints today.
So, there's two twenties and one ten?
Two twenties and one ten, yeah.
So, there's three sections that you're actually gonna be replacing, or two?
There's, there's, well, there's two, two culverts, two barrels, we call it.
Yeah.
Two sixty-inch diameter culverts, side by side.
Okay.
Each of those is made up of two twenty-foot pipe lengths and then a ten-foot pipe length.
Okay, so then, the width of the driveway is, say, thirty feet to be regulation for the fire department, it's gonna be twenty-five or thirty?
It's about twenty-four feet with a five-foot sidewalk.
All right, you're not gonna increase that by putting these new pipes in?
We're not touching, we're not changing the-
You're gonna change, no characteristics of what you have now?
No.
Is that adequate for the facility, what you have now?
The measurement of the, of the roadway was done, uh, fire department came out and assured, at least at this point, that they have enough access to get in and out of the property if there were any significant safety issue, uh, and so, the, once the roadway is at its full, uh, usage, i- it would be more than appropriate to get in and out.
All right, 'cause sometimes seventy, nineteen-seventy, things were different than they are today.
Oh, sure, yeah.
You've already looked into that to make sure that it conforms, you're gonna fix it, you might as well fix it. Is there any sidewalk on the driveway, or just?
There is one sidewalk on the driveway, uh, and, uh, fencing over the culvert, and we'll be looking at, uh, placing a guard rail, uh, in that area.
So, basically, you're not gonna disturb any of the upper surfaces, it's just gonna be slide the sleeves in, grout it, and then, uh, should be?
Repave the affected area, but yes.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me. And in any event, you have, I mean, as far as the flow, you don't, you don't have the whole, full benefit of the five-foot culvert now, and you haven't had it for some time. And there, it doesn't seem to have been a problem, as far as, you know, water goes.
Do you wanna have Erin, uh, put her input in, how you're gonna handle this as far as S and E controls, and what's your, gonna be your timeframe for inspection? I know it's an emergency order, I don't have a problem with that, but I, I think this should be somebody should oversee, basically, to make sure the S and E controls are in place, these things, is that gonna be planning and zoning, or how are we gonna work this?
No, if you look at the last page of the, um, cease and correct order, they are, been directed to put in silt fencing within two weeks of tonight.
Yeah.
Because those slopes are open and, you know, raw, um, and then, they're gonna start work as soon as their material comes in, it's on order, and it's gotta arrive, so they will start work immediately, but the first thing they do after that is they call, well, actually, the first thing they do next week is they hand in, they submit a plan, which I will review with the engineering department, make sure that our town engineer has seen it, and maybe he might have some suggestions, make sure it meets with his approval, and then, but they have to act quickly, so then they would go and start the work, and the first thing they do is put in the erosion controls that are drawn on the, this plan that will be coming in, in a week or so. One thing I'm asking for is a turbidity curtain at the end, their property line is not too far, maybe, what, eighty feet down from the culvert, so they gotta make sure they don't impact that other property or impact downstream, uh, system of the river itself. So, I want a turbidity curtain there, especially for-
As I say, I'm concerned about water quality as far as fines and silks and things coming down, is it gets disturbed? We wanna make sure we're gonna catch the fines and the silks.
Well, I'm open for suggestions beside the turbidity curtain.
Well, the only thing I wanna be sure of, and because we've been through this before with, uh, another project on, in town here, is the Army Corps of Engineers does not have to be involved. We have the jurisdiction to approve this tonight and let it happen, which I think is important it does, but I don't wanna have a stalemate that the Army Corps should be involved in this for any reason. So, if you tell me that we can do this, and it's, it's appropriate, then we can do this. You gotta tell me how you know this.
Well, no, that's interesting. We operate independently from the Army Corps.
Right.
But you, the trigger point is two hundred linear feet, and we're probably over that, aren't we?
Uh, no.
You measure both sides, so it's a hundred feet.
No, we, we, this is, with regard, with regard to other regulatory agencies, my understanding is, um, there is no Connecticut DEP permit required, and with regard to the Arm, the Army Corps of Engineers, there, we would fill out the, so, this is eligible for the self-verification category, we would fill out, it's a, it's a one-page form, it's, it's called self-verification, um, and, and that's really all we have to do.
Okay.
We are not, um, the culverts are fifty feet long, Erin?
Right.
Each of them, we're probably, like I said, I probed that sediment upstream, it was thirty to forty, let's call it forty, you know, so that's ninety. Downstream, we surveyed it, Erin, and we, the material under your order that we have to, you know, the material that went-
Yeah.
Which we'll discuss in a second, that material is about another thirty feet downstream.
Right, I actually misspoke, you don't count the culvert length. No, it's at fifty feet, you don't have to count that, you only count where it's disturbing a stream bank. My understanding for Army Corps, isn't that correct? You don't count the-
No, I have a, I have a different understanding, but either way, it doesn't matter, 'cause it's, it's, it, either way, it doesn't matter, 'cause we're too, we're too short.
All right, I, I just don't wanna get into it and then have it shut down because we didn't do something properly.
Yeah.
We have the jurisdiction, I believe it's important, because it's a facility, care facility.
Critical.
Yeah, and it should go forward, but I just wanna make sure, we're not gonna get spanked for doing something we're not allowed to do.
Understand, well, and, and me too, that's my job too, to make sure-
Okay.
-that we're, we're doing the right things. And that's why we, again, I, I just, just wanna make sure for the record, we, we requested this, we, we, I called up Erin and said, and started immediately talking about a cease and correct order, 'cause my understanding is it's the only way to do this quickly.
Expedite, quickly, yeah, okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, there are two things I'm gonna ask the commission to do. One is to affirm my cease and correct order, and the second thing is to, um, declare that it remains in effect until the work is done, and that the property owner is, you can emphasize that he should carry out all the directives in there.
Okay, so, what you're gonna get, I just understand, we're gonna get one motion that confirms the order.
Right.
Then we're gonna do another motion says that this order will remain into effect until the project's complete?
Until it's correct, right.
Okay.
Have he's gotten both written?
So, um, I have a, I may have a motion to, um, confirm the cease and direct, correct order, uh, dated June five, two thousand and eighteen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the cease and correct order be affirmed on fifty-five Condracki Lane, Quinnipiac Valley Center.
Uh, do I have a second mo-, uh, do I have a second on the motion?
Yeah, second to the motion.
Okay, calls for a vote, Ally?
Yes.
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 And yes.
Yes. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion that the cease and correct order will remain in effect until the project is complete.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the cease and correct order on fifty-five Condracki Lane, Quinnipiac Valley Center, remain in effect until all the work is done.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second to that motion.
Call for vote, Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Yes. So, the, okay, so-
So, both votes, there's no permitting process or anything, right? Just, they're gonna do the corrective action, we don't need any permitting or anything like that? As far as your time out there, what, what do you have scheduled? You're just gonna give them the okay to go ahead and do it, or you're gonna stop out there and periodically visit, you're gonna check when S and E goes in? What's, what's your game plan as far as a, a table of contents to make this work?
Yes, the answer is yes to all the above, I plan to keep on top of this, uh, perhaps the town engineer will go out there as well, um, we, at the end of this, uh, Mr. Chairman, you're gonna close the public hearing?
Oh.
At the end of this, but we're not there yet. I think, um, Mr. Ott wanted to talk about removing the, the deposition that's in the river downstream, is that true?
So, Erin's, I was trying to focus on the, obviously, the critical issue of repairing these culverts, but Erin also noticed that there's some things we need to do, um, in addition to repairing the culverts, um, one is remove the debris dam and remove the sediment upstream that we talked about. I talked about that, because that's gotta be done in order to repair the culverts. The second is, um, some material, that ten and a half feet of cover over those pipes, because of the sinkholes, has made its way down into the culverts and then downstream some distance, probably fifteen feet or so. That material is now, you know, deposited in the stream bed, it needs to be taken out. Luckily, it's all crushed down, so it need, that needs to be removed. The bank that we talked about, where a couple trees had been taken, coincidentally, we're gonna use that as our construction a- access, so when we back out, when the culvert project is done, and we back out, the contractor will restore that bank and replant it, and, and the erosion and sediment controls at the toe of that bank will remain in place until that bank is properly stabilized. Um, is there anything else, Erin? I think that-
Well, the head walls.
Oh, yes, there's, um, there is, uh, vegetation, woody vegetation, maybe, some of it maybe three inches in diameter, that has grown, uh, above the head walls on both sides of the culvert, that's all, that has to be cut, and, and, and removed carefully without disrupting the head walls, so. It's, it's actually, so it's not in earth, it's actually, it's actually grown on the head walls itself, above the culvert, it's above the top of the culvert.
Okay.
Is, uh, that gonna have any impact on the, um, uh, head walls at all, if you remove that vegetation, is that, um?
No.
No?
No, we have to, have to do it carefully, not, it can't just be ripped out with a machine.
Right, 'cause you stuff blown up.
It's gotta be cut and removed by hand, cut by- It's gotta be cut, removed by hand, cut by hand and removed by hand, yeah.
So, being that you've done this before, do you see any field changes?
Happening.
You got all the angles covered?
You know, you never know.
Yeah.
You know, I, if you're, if you've been involved in construction, you know, you never know, but we're doing, you know, we think, we're trying to do our homework and plan it out and do the best job we can, but you never know, any changes we have to make, obviously, we'll discuss with Erin and Rob.
What would be the timeframe, just from my own knowledge, what do you figure the timeframe is, from the time you start to do, you get out of there, a week?
It's gonna take a couple weeks just to get the material in, you know, the contractor to order the material, and there's a lead time to get that here, and the work might, the actual lining of the culverts will probably take less than a week, then there'll be, you know, the items, we talked about, restabilizing that bank, removing the material downstream, and it's gonna take some time, obviously, to re-establish vegetation on that bank, so this project, you know, the major activity will be done in a week or so.
But we're still talking somewhere in July then, before it's gonna be actually footprinted?
And depending on the weather, if we get a lot of rainstorms, and we have, you know, we have erosion problems, we have to re-vegetate the bank, you know, this could be, this could go on into August.
But you've already checked the soil, so you know as far as erosion on the banks, where they're disturbed, you shouldn't have a minimal erosion?
They don't, they don't, they're, even though they're relatively bare, there's not signs of real erosion, or, you know, major erosion paths down them now, the top, up above, probably, because up above is very heavily vegetated, there's a very, very thick, well-maintained lawn above this bank, so, so the major, the major activity will be very short-lived.
Right.
But the construction project won't be complete until everything's stabilized, and that could, that could take a couple of months, especially as we go into the summer.
It sounds like the material's gonna be the actual holdup, two weeks for material?
Yeah, that's the biggest delay, yeah.
I should say that I did confirm with the fire marshal that they are okay with it, they measured 12 and 1/2 feet, aisle is open and fine, and they're good with that.
Okay, okay.
For now, they're good with that, though.
Any other further comments from anybody? In that case, I declare that the public hearing is closed. The next item is adjournment, and I'll entertain a moment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second on the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say, say goodnight.
There's nobody?